Commissioner Vowell, Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Wondell.
Lord, once again, we come in front of you, giving you honor and praise and thanking you for all your blessings, thanking you most of all for saving us. Please forgive us of our sins, time's God that we know that we fall so short of your glory. Please strengthen us, Father, to ever keep our eyes on you. Lord, as we go into this meeting tonight, we pray for your guidance, for that Holy Ghost leadership. We pray that you'd be in the hearts and the minds of each commissioner, each representative that's here tonight, as we try to do what's best for your people. And, Lord, during this season, let us not forget, Father, that the greatest gift that was ever sent came over 2,000 years ago, and nothing we can do can match that. All this we ask tonight in Jesus' holy name, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flyer of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have appearance of citizens. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, you can come up now, just state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing no one, we'll move on to approval and correction of the agendas, starting with the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Wondell to approve as presented. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, let's go to the board and vote. That's regular.
I'm listening, Teresa, she left.
Yep. Well, it did. It's not showing up, but yes. Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the regular agenda. Any discussion, Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to add the minutes from the intergovernmental meeting to the agenda. At your pleasure, as to location, I don't care.
Put that under number 10, under committee reports.
If that's your pleasure.
Is that all right?
Number 1, but that's fine.
Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Yeager.
I'd like to add, under purchasing, a copier contract with the...
Tourism council. Any other corrections?
Double system.
Motion to approve is corrected, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any other discussion on the regular agenda? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Okay, yeah, you can just record me as yes? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have departmental reports. Anderson County park rate increase. Stephanie, did you want to talk about that?
Basically, we are proposing a rate increase, but it's a little bit confusing. In the past, the park has always included the tax, the hotel module tax and any other fees in their rate, because it just made it simpler when they were going around collecting fees just to have a flat rate. So they, last year, we increased it to $30, and then the taxes were taken out of it. Now that we have a reservation system, we are asking to charge, have a flat fee for short-term rentals, which is the camp sites. The RV sites will be $30, the camp sites will be $20, and then the taxes, and the credit card fees would be in addition to that. So it is a, probably a 15% to 20% increase for the park, but it'll just make it a little bit more transparent, and talking with Robbie too, it needs to be transparent of what the fees are for the credit cards, because that will be charged to the customer. The county can't pay for those. So it's just kind of cleaning it up a little bit. We are asking for an amendment to what you see on paper, that the campground for the short term will be in effect January the 1st, and then the long-term will be in effect April the 1st, because long-term campers don't usually come back till April. They, right now, are paying a storage fee, and some of them have paid that in advance, so we would have to go back and charge, and it would just kind of be a mess. So it would just be cleaner if the long-term camping started April the 1st. So is that clear as mud? Any questions?
When I was reading the agenda, I noticed the new rates, but it didn't say what the interval was. Was it a day, a year, or a month?
The rate is $30 a day for RV sites, $20 a day for tent sites, and it'll be, the 350 is for a month on the long-term camping. And then when the new campground area is done, there will no longer be tent sites. They will all be RV sites, so it'll be all $30 a day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Currently, they're $30 minus the taxes and fees. So it comes out to be about $25 for the RV sites, and, you know, probably about $17, $16, $17 for a campsite. And these are right in line with what surrounding campgrounds are doing. We checked with North Stand State Park, Big Ridge, Loyston, and we're either right at, or maybe a little bit below, or maybe a little bit above, but they're right in line with what our surrounding campgrounds are charging. We're a little under on the long-term sites. So, thank you.
That was a motion, Commissioner Yeager, to approve.
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any other discussion, questions? Stephanie, Commissioner Mead.
That is not on your agenda. So is that, the intent of the motion is to change the effective dates?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, that's what I was hoping.
And, yeah, you might, just to make sure, since Annette's recording this from home, I know LeAnn's here, just send that to them.
Yeah, the effective dates for the short term will be January the 1st, and then the long-term will be April the 1st of 2022.
Thank you, any other discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. I'm voting yes, but it's not...
Thank you. Thank you.
There it goes. Okay, yeah, it did. Yeah, motion passed unanimously. Give me the mic.
I'm so sorry.
I don't have a mic.
Give me the mic.
Oh, okay.
Plug in?
I can unplug mine, and I'll move it over here. Oh, it's under this thing. Okay, we're back to where I'm supposed to be. Can you hear me now? There we go. Coordination.
Okay, next, we'll move to committee reports. Purchasing report, Catherine Asher Mary.
Good evening, everybody. So, under contracts approved by the law director, we have three submitting for your approval, either individually or as a group.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager as a group, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
I've got a motion for McCamey. Is that you and me?
No.
No, that must be the old one. Got a motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg.
Both.
Yeah. Motion passes unanimously.
And then, thank you, under new business is the copier for tourism. That was approved to be added to the purchasing committee tonight. Submitting for your approval. I know Stephanie would appreciate that, because her copier's dead. It's really old and just can't be repaired anymore. And this one will provide a cost savings, too.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And that's all I have under my report. If y'all have any questions.
Questions for Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got the budget report. Finance Director Robbie Holbrook.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Anderson. Under the cash and fund balance report, on the general fund line, restricted funds are at $1,012,699. Committed funds, $1,755,00143. Assigned funds are $2,161,322, and an assigned fund balance is $9.9 million. Total fund balance, $14,90209, and cash is $12,975,594 for the ending in November, month ending in November. Any questions on the fund balance report, cash and fund?
Commissioner Wondell.
Yeah, Robbie, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does, I assume, does that number include the ARP funding now?
ARP funding, if you notice, I added a line to this report, like, four down American Rescue Plan Fund. It has its own separate fund, 121.
So it's not a part of that?
No, not of that cash, no, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, sales tax report, for the month of, ending in October, the county as a whole, $3.6 million, up 4%. Anderson County's portion was down 12% this month from last October. And, but, still, for the county as a whole, we're doing well, except, still increasing sales tax, so... Any questions on the sales tax report? All right, budget amendments, Group 2 appropriations for the school fund. There are two of them, seeking approval as a group or individually. Be happy to answer any questions.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell as a group.
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Group 3 transfers, there's one from the school department for $268,000. It's a payroll and major line item both.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Group 5 appropriations, non-school, 6 through 12, 14 through 21, and then 23 and 27.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge to approve as a group?
Yes.
Any discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Group 6 appropriations that affect unassigned fund balance, there are four, 22, 24, 25, and 26. Seeking approval as a group, individually or any questions, be happy to answer.
Motion by Commissioner Denenberg, seconded by Commissioner Jamison to approve as a group. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, under miscellaneous, Group 7, there's, under A, UT extension office, there was a position request. They received grant funding from Tennessee State for an additional position, but it will not start till next budget season, so the Budget Committee approved this to, so they could go ahead and get the hiring process started to put in for next year's budget, in the budget for next year.
Motion by Commissioner Jamison, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and under B, the sports gaming revenue, Commissioner Wondell and the nonprofit committee asked me to consider using the sports gaming revenue for the Conservation Board as a way of funding some of their projects. So the Budget Committee approved that unanimously to recommend to commission to use that money for that purpose. But any, any project that the Conservation Board or would have to come back to commission to move the money from the restricted code to their code, so it would require commission's approval, too, for any, any project, so...
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll support this, but I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, is, when we, as a body, pass a motion, and then the motion's not acted upon, what's, and then that motion here tonight is coming up with something different. I'm just, I'm just curious, what's the process? I guess if we don't act upon the motion, it doesn't carry, or... Because we made a motion in this body to put it, to try to have it asked for to be for volunteer fire departments, and here we are tonight with a different motion. So I'm just asking for some clarity on, what is the proper process to dispatch a motion we already approved?
Jay, do you have any? I remember, I know we talked about what he, I remember what he was saying about the fire departments, but I think that got rejected somewhere.
Do we pass a motion to have this gaming tax go to the fire departments? Is that passed by county commission?
We made a motion, from what I recall, Robbie's checking to said no, but from what I recall is, made a motion to have the sports gaming funds allocated to the volunteer fire departments. That was the motion.
And it was brought up, you, two times by you, and I came back both times saying that we couldn't use that many for that purpose when I asked audit. I don't think it ever went to a vote to commission, from the commission at that level, that we voted on that. It was just asked, you would just ask me to check into it, and I did, but...
Well, I think it was a motion we passed in this body. That was my question to the chairman, is how do we handle it? Again, I'm going to support the motion that's in front of us. I'm not here to debate or try to fight for the money. You know, sometimes, as you sit here, you realize that some things will happen, some things won't. So you just go with what you can get, kind of like the last spoon of peanut butter in the jar, you know? Get it and use it. So I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, maybe Jay can answer it this way. If we pass a motion and there's no action taken upon it, is there a proper process to dispatch that motion? That's my question.
Yeah. If, we'll go back and look at this one specifically, but that motion stands, the previous motion stands, until a new motion is passed to county commission. The more contemporaneous motion will control. So if we did pass something that says these gaming tax funds will go to the fire departments, then that stands until a more contemporaneous motion is made on the issue. If it was in the same meeting, then we'll need a motion to rescind, you know, that process, too. But this is not what we're talking about here. We're talking about something evidently that was passed a few months back, that now we've got a new motion on the table. If this motion does pass, then it controls.
Thank you.
But we'll be glad to take a look at that with Robbie. I'll be glad to help, and we'll find out.
Thank you.
Good answer, Jay.
So we, do we need, we need a motion?
Yes, we would need a motion to pass.
This recommendation. Motion by Commissioner Yeager, do we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, under C, the mayor gave a brief update on the ARP funds for utilities, and no action was taken. And D, new business, the EMA budget amendment, we have already approved that under 27 in Group 5. So that's all I have on the budget report. I do have a finance committee agenda, or a couple of motions that need to be approved by commission on finance committee also.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, so the new code for the ARP funds is 121?
Yes, sir.
And that fund will only have ARP funds in it?
That is correct, and it's on a separate bank account.
And then, when those funds are spent, what is the process there?
Those funds will have to be, any funds being spent, there would have to be approved by commission, but also, we want to make sure that we can, that we vet the...
Meet the criteria.
Right, that we meet the criteria, which there are no guidelines for the criteria, still haven't been passed. So, you know, we're kind of waiting on that.
Well, I know you won't.
But we do have a meeting scheduled for January 11th, another workshop at 4:30 that will be next month, or Commissioner Yeager has requested that we schedule a meeting for that.
I heard what you said, and I appreciate it. I just want to make sure, Mr. Chairman, any of these funds, when they're spent, certainly come back to this body, and we get to have some input, discussion, dialogue. I guess it'll be discussed in finance and budget when it starts to meet those criteria, and then it'll come back to this body, as you said, and then we'll take action.
Any funds spent in ARP funds would have to be approved by this body.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Robbie. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Robbie, what is the date that those funds have to be, that we have to make a decision on?
We have two, I think, 2024, but they may extend that.
That might, since they haven't passed the guidelines, okay?
Since the process, the first process, it not even happened yet.
So we've got some time on that. Commissioner Yeager.
Robbie, can you go over the process of the, not approval from the state, but guidance from the state when we submit?
They will give their feedback, but they don't, they're not, they won't stand behind any... Like, even if they say, yes, we think this could get approved, they're not, they're not going to stand behind that, so... I mean, we can get, we'll vet every project or possibility for project we can, I mean, that commission would like to, but that, there's no guarantee that.
It's as much as a safety valve as we can get, though.
That's it, yes, sir.
Any other, Commissioner Wondell?
Mr. Chairman, just a separate item. Just for the record, I want to say that I understand from the state, the answer was no, could not use the funds for the sports gaming, for the volunteer fire departments. But I believe personally that the volunteer fire departments met that criteria as a public infrastructure. I believe that the volunteer fire departments are a vital part of the public infrastructure in Anderson County, and I, you know, I understand the answer from the state, and I appreciate you checking, Robbie. I just wanted to go on record and say that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for Robbie for budget? As we're ready, move on to the financial report.
Okay, under finance, the first motion was the charitable donation policy. Motion by Dr. Parrott, seconded by Mayor Frank to request, to county commission recommendation for approval, striking number 8, ending the appropriation agreement. I don't know if y'all have had a chance to look at the agreement that was in the finance committee minutes, but Commissioner Yeager and the mayor worked real hard on this, and I think we have something that commission will be happy with, and a, or an approval process for nonprofits that goes to the nonprofit committee first, and then to budget committee, and then commission would have to approve, so... But that policy needs commission's approval also.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any other, any discussion? All right, let's go to the board and, oh, Commissioner McCamey.
Yeah, I've got one question. Is this going to be like it was originally now, where we appropriate a set number, amount of money, and then all the departments or all the nonprofits come in? Or are we going to take these one at a time individually as they're requested?
The nonprofit committee will not be funded, and the process will be an application that goes to finance first, to make sure they've answered all the questions and everything is right. Then it comes to the nonprofit committee. They can make a presentation if they like, and then we would, the nonprofit committee would vote to recommend to budget whether we approve or disapprove, but it's still budget's final decision, but not final. It goes to budget, then it goes to full commission. So it has four steps for transparency and oversight. So it will not be funded, it'll be the way it is now, on, just on a one-by-one basis.
Okay.
Commissioner Mead.
I just wanted to say that this is one of the things that I was really, I thought was really important, what he just talked about, is we don't need to start off with saying, we're going to give away this money this year. As we go along, we see how things go, if we have the money available, and it meets the criteria, and it looks like a good thing to do, we can do it. And if it gets towards, even if, even if for mid-year or end of the year, whenever, if it looks like, you know, some things didn't really go like we hoped it would, and I don't know that we can really afford this, then we, we always have the option to decide not to go ahead. And so I think that's the best way to do it, because I'm personally very opposed to saying, here's a big chunk of money, and we're going to try to give it away this year. Instead, we'll, as we go along, if things go well, then we can be more generous, and if we, and if things don't go so well, you know, we get a big lawsuit that we lose or something, then we'll have to have our belts a little tighter, not have something sitting aside that was already marked as to give away. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Eleven yes, two no, motion passes.
Okay, and the last thing I have tonight is, under the finance committee, there was a motion made to dedicate a percentage of rollover money for capital needs from the July meeting. We talked about it in July, discussed it again this month. Motion by Dr. Parrott and seconded by Mayor Frank to annually dedicate 20% of the fund balance for capital needs each year, so, and that was the recommendation to, sent to county commission.
Of rollover, yes. Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Mead.
Oh, I want to respond.
Commissioner Yeager. Commissioner Jaeger.
Robbie, will you, couldn't you go ahead and give a back-looking example of what would have happened?
Yes, so...
This past year, just so people can have an understanding.
So this year, our fund balance was 10 million, 10.8 million, when we rolled all the funds in July, and revenue, and what was left in expenditure codes. We ended last year at 5,130,301. So there was, no, we didn't end that. The rollover was 5,130,301. So 20% of that would be a million and $26,060. So 20% of the 5 million that we had in rollover this year. Is that what you, did that answer your question? Last year, we did, we made a motion to do $2 million, but they made more. This year's motion for each year going forward was 20% instead of a flat rate of the rollover.
Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think I'd like to see this number a little higher, actually. In the past, we didn't plan for any capital improvements, and then we just found the money during the year. I think it's a better idea to have some money in our budget. So this is, this is a good step in the right direction, and I strongly support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the 5 million we had last year, what did we do with it?
Of the 5 million that we ended the year with? It's still an unassigned fund balance.
So I guess my question is, if this motion passes, does it not have to meet the criteria to have a certain threshold in the undesigned fund balance? Or is this going to trump that? Or could it cause us problems in the future?
Well, we're just moving the money to an assigned code, which commission, honestly, any meeting could unassign, you know, unassign the assigned. You could change that to move back to unassigned fund balance, or vote for a different project, or a project in general. So you're just, it takes it out of fund balance and puts it in a different code, but it's still controlled by commission, if that answers your question.
Well, I mean, our current minimum fund balance is, what, 4.5 or 5?
It is 5.5 million. We increased that last year.
So if we roll over 5 million this year, and then we take out 20%, it falls under the 5, how's that work?
Well, if it falls under the 5, it would require two-thirds votes for a budget amendments from commission is the only stipulation on that.
Well, this motion says we'll allow 20% of the rollover to be taken out. It doesn't say, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's only $1 million, though. That still will make your fund balance 8.9 million.
Well, if we use the scenario of a $5 million rollover like last year, I understand it could be more. But if it was only 5, and then you took out the 20%, then it falls below that threshold we have to maintain. So my question is, from a procedural process, how will we manage that? I mean, I know we're going to say, well, we'll just do it, you know. But me personally, I don't want to see us put anything in a motion that locks us in to 20% or 5% or 10%. I'd rather see us do like we've done ever since I've been on this commission. When the year's over, you come to us, tell us we got $5 million. The school comes to us, the mayor comes to us, and say, we like to have $2 million to put in the capital fund balance, and we say, okay. I think we're setting ourselves up for some problems if the funds dip down, and now we've got to meet the 5 million, then we've got this 20% that we have to, have to give.
Well, here's, if I understand your question correctly, for example, this year, we ended it with fund balance at 5 point something million, like 5.3. If we only had a rollover of 200,000, or a decreased fund balance, then the 20% of that would be hardly anything or less than zero, so we wouldn't take any money. So if you don't really have a rollover, you're not going to take 20, there's nothing to take 20% from. I think it's only for the years that we have, in which have been the last few years, we've had very good rollovers. But...
Don't we have some codes where we're already funding the capital fund balance?
We, the 177 fund, yes.
And don't we, didn't we pass a tax? I mean, I didn't vote for a tax increase, but didn't this body pass a tax increase to set certain funds aside for capital funds?
Not a tax increase, no. To the, to the general fund capital projects, two, three years ago, we put five pennies in the schools' capital projects.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And they've been managing it pretty well, from what I could tell.
Right. It's helped.
Well, I appreciate the answers, and I don't mean to be...
No, you're fine.
I just, thank you.
I hope if I didn't, I hope I made myself...
No, you made yourself clear. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Eleven yes, two no. Motion passes.
Okay. That's all I have. Any other questions, unless there's any other questions for me?
Any other questions for Robbie? I've got one quick one.
Yes, sir.
It may not be time for it yet, but we got the audit complete, right?
Yes, sir.
And we had a couple, maybe minor, audit findings. How's that progressing as far as getting?
Audit is complete. We've already had an exit conference with the auditors. We've, I mean, we'll be having an audit committee meeting probably scheduled either next month or the next, I mean...
But, so then, once that, we've worked out how to correct it?
Well, you have to have, anytime you have an audit finding, you have to have a corrective action plan and meet, to submit with the finding, and we've done that, so.
Oh, okay. So we'll get, like, a clean?
Yes.
Clean one in a couple months. Okay. I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right. Hope everybody has a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Robbie.
Next up, got the director of schools report, Dr. Parrott.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson, and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas.
We made it through first semester, and I think we had a lot of great things going on. But I hope you got a chance to look at some of the reports, and I would ask that you get a chance to just sit down, and Channel 95 will be replaying a lot of the Christmas cantatas and things like that from our students, and they did a fantastic job. And a lot of the pictures, our schools really and truly give back to the community. Every school does a food drive, every school does. They have, I don't know what they call them, have angel trees and things like that. And I got a picture from Norwood Elementary School yesterday, and they were going to give these out. And I think they had over 75 baskets full of food that were going to the families of the students that were getting the gifts. So, so I think we're doing a good job teaching our kids that we need to give back. Just a few more highlights that I think's a good thing. We've received, us in partnership with TCAT Knoxville, received a give grant for over $900,000. And that will be to, to start two new programs at ACCTC. It will be industrial maintenance and lineman, where they climb line poles. And both of them will be at ACCTC. So we're working right now to refit where we used to have the paint booth, and it's not been used in quite a few years, to put industrial maintenance in that place. And I hope that you got a chance, if you did, to go out and look at the new TCAT facility. It is amazing. Our students are already using that. And I think that, I have to give a shout out to Tim Thompson and that group that really put some things together years ago, and Randy Boyd and all of that group, that, that building will pay dividends for many, many years, and it will really help our students and our community. So we're excited about that. We did have our town hall meeting at Norris Middle School last week to talk about the expansion of the classrooms, six classrooms. I thought it went really good. I want to thank Mr. Anderson for being there. It'll also not only give our class, some more classrooms, it will also relieve some of the traffic and give some more parking. So we're excited about that. ESG has started. They've ordered a lot of the equipment, a lot of the heating air units and windows that will be going into Norris Elementary, Lake City Elementary, Lake City Middle, and Norwood Elementary School. So we're good. We're excited about those things. I wished I had better news about Claxton with the lights, but I've been on it, Catherine's been on it, the mayor's even got involved on it. We're trying to find another company. Last week, they wouldn't even return Catherine's calls. So we're, we've ordered them, they're supposed to be here, but nobody will tell us. So we're going to try our best to find a new company. She's reached out to the company that actually put the lighting system up there at Claxton. So we're going, we're working on that to see if we can get somebody to come in. So I do thank the Sheriff Barker for bringing out patrols and things like that, but we've got to get those lights done, or stand out there with a reflector or something in the side of the road. So, but other than that, I think that if our students, actually Clinton High School got a almost $50,000 STEM grant, we're working on getting Clinton High School and Claxton Elementary STEM certified. So we're trying to work that to give our students more opportunities. And I'll take any questions.
Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about your, your monthly reports. I'm not sure who all gets involved in putting those things together, but I'm really impressed with the way there's, the flow, the vitality, the positive momentum, the energy that they, they just, you just kind of, as you go along, it just sucks you to the next page, you know? And it's like we're reading a bestselling novel or something, you know? It's just, I mean, they're not all that way. There's a few places, right? I found a misspelled word in one of them.
Uh-oh. Well, Pam Crawford does a great job on that, and she gets it from all the other directors.
But, but it just, it just really is a wonderful example of what can be done with our language and with the, with relatively simple computer tools. It looks, it just looks like it was done, well, it is, has been done professionally, and I commend you for it.
Commissioner McKinney.
Dr. Parrott, what's the timeline on Claxton, a new school being built? I know a few months back, there was some discussion about it, and a lot of social media about the football field being taken. And you talked about the town hall at Norris. Maybe we needed one at Claxton.
So what happened is the, when they, in the last minute, and I thought I may have explained that last time, but in the last minute, with the, I don't know what they call it now, I don't know if it's Build Back Better, the infrastructure, the infrastructure bill, in the last minute, they took all, all the funding for the, for new schools. So that was where we were looking at bringing all that funding from. So we've got to back up and really look at some other things. It's still on the plan. We want to get this other stuff done, because the SIR money has to have been spent within two years. You couldn't use this, this SIR funds for new construction. You could only use it for remodeling and to expand space. So it's still on the plans. We really hope to, in the next four to six months, to work with Cumberland Securities to see where the funding can come from.
Well, I still think a town hall would be, would be good, because there was a lot of misunderstanding, I think, about the youth program over there and all that.
And, and we did not, we did not shut the, the youth program for basketball down. We, we gave them every opportunity to do it. The only thing we required was, is they had to have somebody there that would clean up when it got done. And we require that at the other places that we do that. And the guy that was over it, he decided not to do it. And we're really hopeful that the Claxton optimists will take that back over, because they need some, some sports facilities out there. Another thing, we're looking to see if the Boys and Girls Club may work on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah, I was very pleased to read about the Americans with Disabilities Act improvements you're making at the schools. It looked like about 10 different projects you completed in working on a playground that's accessible. And we're very pleased that that's coming along. Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrott, I just wanted to follow up on the lights. Are we ordering several lights, or just the one?
We, we had the, we have the one ordered, that we ordered in September. We called them, told them we wanted three more. We wanted, we wanted one right when you turn the corner, and two on the other side. And, and they've not sent us the, the prices or anything on that. So that's why we're, we're looking at it. I, they say it's a supply chain issue, but I think we're not really big enough from them to pay attention to it. And it's progressive. You would think that they would want to do that. But we're, I've talked to Mr. McKinney, and we're going to find somebody or try to build it ourselves or do something, because it's just, that's unacceptable.
Yeah. And I know you're working on it, and I appreciate it. We definitely, it's been a long time coming, and as we talked about last time, we waited on getting the intersection finished. Now it's finished. We just need to get some lights down there soon. And I know you're working on it. First of anything I can do to help, I'll be happy to do so.
Do it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Parrott? Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up's county mayor, Mayor Frank.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and welcome back, Commissioner McKinney. I don't know how high you're kicking, but you're back, so we're happy. And Commissioner Wondell's messing with my mind, sitting in Commissioner Fritz's seat, so.
You know, I just, they told me I had to stay here, so hell, here I am.
I just have a few action items. The first is requesting a motion to approve the appointment of Patrick Berg to the Anderson County Regional Solid Waste Board, and this does come with a recommendation from the city of Oak Ridge.
Motion by Commissioner McKinney, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Next is a request to extend the EMS monoclonal antibody treatment program to January 31st, 2022. This is per year authorization. This was to go through December 31st. We're doing this at the senior center location. Nathan is here, and, and we'll give you an update on that. But that's the request, if you'd like to hear from him first, or however you want to proceed on that.
Okay. Want to hear from, I guess we got the motion. Go ahead, go ahead, Nathan.
All right. So to date, we've given 23 monoclonal antibody therapy treatments. They've all gone well. The process is going well. The patients are receiving it well. We haven't had any complications whatsoever. We've followed up with several of the patients, not every single one of them, and seen good benefit from that. So most of all of our cases, again, are going to be mild, mild symptoms that, that people have from, from the treatment. We still have 25 doses on hand. So that's kind of the extension. We did see a little bit of an uptick after Thanksgiving. So we're kind of expecting the same thing with, with Christmas, that we could see another uptick. So we still have those 25 doses. We'll continue going. We thought that would be a good benefit, after what we saw with Thanksgiving, to push it a little bit farther into, into January, to the end of January.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Do you see any need to change any of the things you're doing?
No, we, so thankfully, we started out slow. And so we learned a lot of things on how to really have our process down well. So when it came time, like right after Thanksgiving, the highest number we had was seven at one time. And we were still out of there by, we started at nine, and we were still out of there by 10:45.
Wow.
So we, we've got the process down really well. It is primarily run by administrative personnel. So we're not really using our medics on the truck much at all with the process that we've, we've got in place.
Great. All right. Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah. Nathan, you've touched on my question, I think. I'm wondering about the impact on staff of the program, and has that required you to shift things around?
No, sir. No, it hasn't. I've been at all except for one clinics myself. We've had several that have been dedicated to it, again, admin staff. We did have a lady, one of our paramedics. She was on lot duty. So it was kind of fortunate for us, for a majority of them. She's helped out a couple times since coming off lot duty, but that's it. So it's, it's not, I think, a total, maybe four hours of overtime that we've used out of multiple clinics that we've done. So we're keeping our costs down. And we've dedicated, even when we communicated to our staff, that we were not going to require them to do these clinics. We, as the admin staff... We, as the admin staff, were going to run the clinic, so that, we weren't pulling them from the truck. We weren't having trucks come out of station to go there. We weren't requiring them to come on off-duty time. We, we said we were going to do this, and we were going to do this without making them have to be a part of it. But some of them have, have wanted to be a part of the process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Dinnenberg to extend this to January 31st. Have any other discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And the next, if you don't mind staying in case there are questions on this one, is to extend the program eligibility to Anderson County employees subject to the same medical requirements and policies.
So, I guess if we were, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
If, if we do remember, we, when we started this, we said Anderson County residents only. So, that, though we do have Anderson County employees that live outside of the borders, if, if we can extend that, I would like to be able to extend that to our Anderson County employees, and, and even if this body would consider those that live in their household. If they meet the requirements, they have to meet all the requirements, they have to have physician approval, they have to go, all those things still apply, but I would like to extend that to, to the rest of our employees that may not live in the county.
Is that, is that your motion, Commissioner Mead?
Yes.
And, and including the family members in?
Yes.
In the household?
Assated.
Seconded by Commissioner Dinnenberg.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Yeager.
My question is, the physicians, is it a prescription kind of a thing?
It is. So, they have to be screened by physician, they have to have a positive test, test from that office, and then the physician has to fill out our paperwork and identify what criteria they meet to get the, the medication.
Does our clinic qualify as a?
It would.
Forwarding? Okay, all right.
It would. And we've tried, we've reached out to doctors' offices, we've reached out to clinics. I'd like to give a shout out to the, to the Norris Clinic. All of our patients have come through the Norris Clinic. Other clinics, like Fast Paces, not, is not filling out paperwork for them to go to any clinic. So, it's unfortunate, but doctors' offices, some have been reluctant as well, but we've, we have to have all that certified and process in hand, or you don't get it. And we keep, we keep those records, and we'll continue to keep those records.
That's perfect.
Any other discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
That's all for my report, although I would like, Nathan, to give you all a very brief update on the first successful graduation class for in-house. So, if you don't mind.
I will be brief. So, the state passed legislation allowed 15 ambulance services to teach their own in-house EMT program. Anderson County is one of those 15. We had our first class. We had six people start the class, six people complete the class, six people passed the class, and all of them passed first-time testing for their national registry, and they're all now licensed EMTs. So, it was a 10-week class, Monday through Friday. It was a tough class, but all of those, it was two Clinton firefighters that attended that class, and then we had four people that we hired that came through that class, and now they are actually working on an ambulance for Anderson County. So, extremely successful. It is going to be an opportunity for us to continue to keep our staffing up, to continue to see, keep all of our ambulances on the road. So, we have our next class coming January 31st. Clinton is sending three to that. Clinton Fire is, Claxton Fire, I believe, is sending one to, to that class as well, and we're looking at maybe having a, a few more go through the class. We can have a max of 10, but that, that comfort level of about six or seven is, is a good comfort. So, it was, I'm, I'm extremely proud of our department. Really honestly, our, our instructors did a phenomenal job, but beyond that, our medics on the truck took ownership on it and really took these, these individuals under their wing and just, just flew with it. As a, a service as a whole, it was really incredible to watch that play out, a dream of mine to, to come into reality. So, we're excited about what that means for us going forward, but I just wanted to give a, a quick update to, to you all about that.
I think that's all.
Make sure everybody knows, that clap is not for me. That is for the instructors and the students. I, I did not instruct any of the classes. My, my staff did, did that. They, they, I, I gave them the dream, and they brought it to reality, so that, that was for them.
Good job.
Commissioner Dinnenberg.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nathan, if you don't mind, I'm going to toot your horn a little bit more. Couple of weeks ago, Dr. Bunic and I were invited to come over to the facility. Nathan and his team had it set out with all of the apparatus and, as Dr. Bunic called them, toys that, that they had. This woman was absolutely enthralled with what she learned from Nathan and the, Bobby Joe and the other gentleman.
Scott Thomas.
Scott. To the point that she even asked to be able to come back for instructions on one or two pieces of equipment, that she was just over the moon that they were able to possess and to be able to use for Anderson County. So, excuse me, I just want to say thank you. It was a very enlightening day, and if anybody else has the opportunity to go over there and see what they are actually doing, you'll be very impressed. Thank you.
I guess follow up on that, that really, she said toot my horn, that is, again, that's my staff.
There was.
Bobby Joe and Scott, and, and all those are, I mean, they're, they're knocking the, knocking it out of the park.
They really are. Thank you, Nathan.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Commissioner McCamey.
My question's for the mayor.
Can I ask Nathan before you?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. What, what's the staffing look like these, these days?
We're fully staffed.
Excellent, all right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Patrick Berg's on the, your first request there. You say he's from Oak Ridge?
Yes.
Okay, we're still a member short from Norris and Oliver Springs on the solid waste board.
Okay.
And while we're talking about solid waste, if you've not been by the site on East Wolf Valley, you can see a lot of progress being made there, so.
It's looking really good.
Yep.
Very excited.
Well, we do need those two new members.
I'll follow it.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, did, did we ever get any further feedback from TVA about this possibility of getting a school?
I have not heard anything back.
Have they responded to any of the letters we sent?
Yes, when, so, when we first sent the letter making the request, they actually came on site, they set up a meeting to go over some of the ideas, what we were talking about. I shared with them, maybe some of the area. I think it was, I can't remember now what the, the road is off, but the end of that property that they had purchased with the original intent to do an expansion. And so, they gathered the information, were taking it back, but I haven't ever heard a follow-up, so.
Anytime in the future, if you don't mind, when we have a meeting with TVA, I'd like to be there. I know Commissioner Fritz would as well. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Sure.
And get their input on, you know, I, I feel like they owe us a reply to our letter that we passed in full commission unanimously, and I'd like to hear what they have to say. You know, we still have issues over there in Claxton Playground and all that kind of good stuff, and I'd like, and not, not only that, we got a, I guess, an election coming up this year, and we got some ADA concerns with our voting facility there. So, I, I'd like to see something sooner than later. I know they can't build one in, in four months, but I think we need to get a plan in place. So, if you could update me next time, maybe I can get with them and meet with you two. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor?
Thank you.
On to the law director to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be brief. Does anybody have any questions on my written report in the agenda packet? Okay. The only issue I have is the fire truck resolution. It's also under the operations report. We can do it now, or we can wait until operations. Go ahead and do it now, Tim. Okay, I sent you out about 5:30 this afternoon, the latest update, and I really appreciate the commissioners and everyone, including Nathan and the mayor, that gave me input on this. We've tried to refine it as best as we can. You should have a version on your iPad, and also I printed you off a copy that's got all the changes underlined or highlighted. And if you look in the title, starting off there, it's "up to $325,000," and that's in the caption headings. Third, whereas clause, it's "up to" added. Now, therefore, be it resolved, paragraph, it's added "up to." Section one, talking about the order, added there, unless variances are authorized by the fire commission, we'll go in that specific order as funds become available. Section two, you have a change there of "up to" added, again, before the $325,000. Section three, I had in there before, 50% upon presentation of the purchase contract or invoice, and of, or "up to $162,000," added that there. So, our maximum exposure is the 325. The fire truck may come in below that, but no more than 325. Then I added, under section three, the purchase vehicle will be owned by the respective purchasing fire department and shall not be titled in the name of Anderson County. There was some liability concerns. We addressed it operations and also some concerns about surplus in county property in the hands of others. Then, section five, we added "all" before repairs, damages, and fuels, so we're not on the hook for anything there as far as vehicle maintenance. And the way this is designed, we're on the hook only for the funding as available. That's it. Nothing more. The insurance, the maintenance, everything else is on the respective fire departments or the receiving fire departments. Section eight's got fire commission participation. There's an added line there that says disputes arising from compliance with this agreement will first be redressed by the fire commission with subsequent ratification by the board of commissioners. So, if there's a dispute, we'll try to resolve it, kind of an informal mediation before the fire commission, and whatever they determine, we'll send that to county commission for final confirmation. Section 12 is the last amendment. It is expected, it's on the very end of that paragraph, it is expected of the receiving department that any vehicle purchased with donated funds from Anderson County will remain in the use, in use with the receiving department throughout the life of the vehicle. However, if a sale or transfer is contemplated during the lifetime of the vehicle while owned by the receiving department, waivers of this requirement will be considered by the fire commission for good cause shown. Departments failing to adhere to this process may jeopardize future donations from Anderson County. That's in response to a couple commissioners that had concerns about what if we gave the money, they purchased the vehicle, and then sold it. I think that takes care of your concerns there. Any other questions, questions concerning this new resolution? Again, this is a donation-only. This is not involving our purchasing department or our accounting department as far as the negotiations, selecting a vendor, the bidding, any of that. We're simply the funding mechanism when the funds are available, and that's the best I can describe it. Nothing more, nothing less. Any questions? If you do choose to decide to take this matter up tonight on a vote, it has not been to the budget committee, therefore, we'll need a three-force vote. You may choose, we got a couple commissioners missing tonight, that may be difficult to achieve. You may choose to refer this to the budget committee for future discussions in January. However you want to do it is fine with me. Any other questions? I do appreciate Chief Fox, Chief Croft, that is her, she's incognito tonight. She must be on the run from something. Certainly Nathan, as always, and the mayor, for all her help on this, and all of you. It's truly been a collaborative effort for us to work together. Thank you so much.
Good job, man.
Motion, Commissioner Mead, what's your motion?
Yeah, I'm withdrawing on my motion. I think we need to wait on this until we have more commissioners on board or have it go through budget.
Is that just not a motion?
We got a motion, Commissioner McCamey.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this to the operations committee and budget committee and bring it back in next month.
Seconded by Commissioner Isbell, discussion.
That's a good motion.
Do we have a, we got Chief Croft, you want to? Give us your name and address.
Ambria Croft, 54 East Norris Road, chief at Andersonville. Thank you, Chairman. The only thing I would remind you all of is we are still attempting to make a bulk purchase, and that bulk purchase has considerable price increases if this is not met within a certain amount of time, if you all recall from other meetings where we have brought this to you all. We did get an extension till January 14th. I'm not sure if that, Mr. Bell, can be extended to the 20th. I think that covered January's full county commission, but I know we did for sure get the extension till January 14th. So, just keep that in mind when we keep referring this back out. I mean, I, I would, I want it to pass, so I understand, you know, holding off to, you know, so you only had to have the majority vote opposed to three-quarter by referring to budget, but I don't know if that's something you all can discuss here tonight, but we are on that time crunch still, so that's all I would want to add to that.
We need to get on the 18th. We've got a local holiday there on the 3rd of May, so it'll be the 18th.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah, you, you mentioned bulk purchase, but this, is my understanding, this would not be?
That's the fire departments working together.
We're still going forward with the bulk purchase. It's just we're coming together, I guess you could say, maybe through fire commission to do this bulk purchase. We've worked the deal out with Pierce to be able to do it that way, so we still have that bulk purchase discount. The same thing that's been presented to you guys with the one point, almost 1.9 million in savings, all that is still in play. That hasn't left. That's why we're pushing this the way we are.
So, you can still go bulk even though you, you're going to have very different, maybe very different trucks that you want here?
Yes. That was what made this deal so unique, and while we've been pushing so hard for it, was because we can do 11 different trucks for 11 different departments and still receive that bulk discount, and that's a very unique opportunity, especially given all the inflation and uncertainties in the economy right now. So, we don't want to let this deal pass if we can.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for me tonight?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How, how would we fund this?
The funding, I've not been involved in, but the way I understood it, there was consideration of federal funds involved, but I think Commissioner Yeager said it more than likely would come out of unassigned reserves at this point. We don't have enough clarity, but right now, it's looking like you, correct me if I'm wrong, more on top of this than I am, but it would be an unassigned reserve purchase at this particular moment.
I would, I would agree with that, but it's whether we're going to have a combination of borrowing and undesignated fund, I don't think that's, I don't think we have an answer for that yet. Do you agree, Mayor? Okay.
So, if I understand this motion correctly, it's to make it go to the operations and the budget, have further discussions. If it was to pass, the motion is to allow the individual departments to purchase their own trucks. Would we?
Spack it, too.
Would we give all the money out at once?
Well, that depends. It's always, remember, it's always. Uh, it's always, remember, it's always contingent upon available funding. So I don't want anybody jumping the gun on that, especially the fire departments. That has to be, uh, contemplated by the Budget Committee and Finance Committee, and certainly in conjunction with Robbie's advice, but, um, it's always contingent upon available funding.
I'm in favor of it. I like the idea of, I'll support the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? All right, and this is a motion to refer this to both the Budget and Operations Committee?
Yes.
Is that right? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
That's all I have for you tonight. Does anybody have any questions on any legal issue facing Anderson County tonight? I'm here to help you with any questions you may have on any issue.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay, if this passes, I guess it's going to replace the old fire truck resolution.
Yeah, we're, um, with the 50% left to Andersonville Fire Department, that's resolution of 2006 has been fully funded and complied with.
Last question, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Uh, did, did we ever get a letter back or a response back from EPA on our letter asking for, um, what was it, the RICRA, uh, site there, and, uh, Block House?
I have not.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion that we have another letter drafted by Law Director to send as a follow-up, uh, to EPA? I think it's Region Four in Atlanta.
Yes, sir.
Same gentleman.
Sure is.
And, and I, I think we, 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 we're due a, a response from EPA on that. Uh, you know, we've got some serious stuff that's been sitting in Anderson County, down in our district, sometimes District One, sometimes District Two. Um, we need to have this stuff, uh, really taken care of, and just having to fence around it for 40 years, don't fix it. So I think it's incumbent upon all of us here with the mayor's help and Law Director, we need to really put the hammer down and start demanding that EPA step up to the federally, you know, I, I've heard a lot sitting in these chairs about federal jobs, constitutions, and follow the rules, and it's your duty. Well, I, I think it's their duty to clean up the mess that's been placed in our county. And, uh, you know, this is, this typifies typical response you get. You know, you send a letter, you follow procedures, you pass a resolution to get it done, and no response. So I'm going to make a motion to have the Law Director, and if the mayor would like to participate, I'd love to have her join. If she doesn't, that's her obligation. Uh, I'd, I'd like to have her join in, I think. I don't think you're against this, are you, Mayor?
Uh, I was going to actually speak on it real quickly. I have a little bit of insight. I think I mentioned this to Jay, um, when we met onsite with TDEC to look at the American Nuclear Site, they are, they are having conversations with EPA, and, um, I did see, uh, Steve Sanders, um, at a conference. He's the Director of Remediation. I asked him about their conversations with EPA. Um, the Region Four position, that is the head in, in Region Four, that, there is a vacancy currently right now. So that person is not, they're sitting in an interim position. They're not authorized, um, to, basically to, I, I guess, enter into any agreement at this point. I don't know what the exact limitations are on their authority. I don't want to speak out of turn, but they're awaiting that appointment, I guess, or that placement by President Biden. So I, I do want to say that every indication I have is that, um, you know, we've got a great partner in the EPA, we've got a great partner in TDEC, and there seems to be a real desire, uh, to try to clean up this legacy issue once and for all. And so, um, we're going to keep working that angle in a positive way, and I don't think we're being ignored. I think really and truly it's a matter of, um, there's new people to move into that position, and then once that authority is, um, available, then we will see more action.
Thank you.
That's exactly the way I understand it. Uh, within about 10 days of us sending that letter, we had contact with Joseph Sanders, who's an attorney and also has assigned this case with TDEC, so he didn't specifically say he'd been requested by the EPA, but I believe that's how it's working. They've just deferred this to TDEC, but I will follow that up, Commissioner. I'll, in fact, I'll send a, a letter here before Christmas.
I don't know if our letter before went to just EPA, or do we include our state-elected officials?
I can't remember. I'll take a look at it, but, um, I know it was sent out, and I, I know I added a copy. I sent it to you, and I think it's even in the minutes, but...
Mr. Chairman, I think I'd like to make a motion to pass, uh, another letter and respectfully requesting additional feedback. Uh, I don't think we're demanding anything. We're just asking for additional feedback, but also include all of our state legislators, the governors, Lieutenant Governor, state representatives for our district and our area, and I make that motion.
Uh, if you don't mind, would you add Representative Fleishman? He has had a sit-down meeting with, on this specific issue.
Absolutely.
He's promised to help.
I'll amend that motion to include Congressman Fleishman as well. Thank you for bringing that up.
And a motion, do we have a second? Second about Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
That's all I have for you tonight. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Yes?
Did, did that doze off, or did you talk about Anderson County zoning violations?
I didn't talk about them. Um, they're in the written report. I normally don't speak to each one individually. Do you have a s- specific question?
No, I just, uh, it was on their agenda, and I didn't know if I had missed it or...
Past two months, we've given you a, a kind of a global overview of where we're at. Uh, I think they have numerous issues going on right now, but as you see there for, um, the people interested in District One, uh, we've got a couple dissolved in Ben's Mobile Home Park or Pine Meadows, and, uh, we've got, what, three new ones down there too. I think last month we had eight, uh, down there, so, uh, we're moving forward on all those. If anyone looks over that list and has a specific question about any of those, let me know. And, Tim, uh, we've got a resolution on one of the ones you've referred to our office, and thank you for that. But, um, any other questions on those? Thank you so much. Uh, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. It's always a pleasure to serve this body, and, uh, got some big questions next year. I can't get away. Go ahead, Tracy.
Thanks. I just want to follow up on Commissioner McCamey's questions. Um, we, we got, some of us, I believe, got the report from the mayor, and I did receive it, thank you, Mayor, on that engineering study that was done, uh, in that area, Pine Meadows. Um, well, when will we, uh, explore next steps there? It sounds like right now we're letting them try to address all the issues that we can, but I guess my question is, I'd like to make that report available to all the commissioners. I don't know if all the commissioners got it. I believe it just went to the Operations Committee, but I'd like to see that move forward, or maybe we pick it back up. Chairman Isbell in Operations, I, what's your thoughts, Jay?
I think that's a great idea. Uh, there's so many loose ends right now. Uh, I know I've got several in my office, uh, but, uh, that's a good document, uh, to look to the future and, uh, know what kind of high price tags we've got and what kind of problems we need to address and try to get the owners to address. And if you recall, it's not just one person that owns that. It's, um, it's very complicated because you'll have an individual that owns the real estate, a different individual that owns the structure of the mobile home, and a different individual that's the occupant. So, uh, all three of those have to be brought into court when we have a zoning violation, and, um, sometimes it's difficult to get service on all three of them. Uh, so, but we're moving forward on all those, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Is that it? Thank you so much. I appreciate all of you. Let me know if you have any questions.
We've got Committee and Board reports. Operations Committee Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wondell made a motion to appoint Commissioner Yeager and the mayor to represent Anderson County in a Tennessee school funding meetings, discussions. Commissioner Scott seconded the motion. Motion passed forward full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell to approve, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion for the Sea Cadets to relocate to Dark Building. Commissioner Yeager seconded the motion. Motion passed forward full commission for approval.
Got a motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes all the action items that was taken up by the Operations Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell. Uh, Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, I just want to make a point in, in regard to item six. I now have an email from, from Representative Reagan, uh, from Legal Counsel in Nashville saying that, that federal, um, employees of federal contractors, okay, are not considered federal employees under the Hatch Act. And there, we're waiting for a final response regarding Postal Service, because the post office is a company that just happens to be owned by the federal government, which is not a lot different than TVA or the DOE plants in Oak Ridge. And so that, I just wanted just to give you advisement that we know that the, the people that work at Y-12 or work at, at those plants, or the Oak Ridge National Lab or something like that, if they're employees of the contractor, they're not subject to Hatch Act. If they're DOE employees, if they're actually DOE people working at those plants, and of course, they are covered by the Hatch Act, if they work at the DOE headquarters or they're actually a DOE employee, but if they're an employee of a contractor to DOE, that they're, they are not considered, uh, federal employees under the Hatch Act. And again, we're waiting to find a final answer on the post, on the post office. I was supposed to try, I was supposed to get that today, that, the thing about the post office, but I do have an email that I will forward on to everybody, uh, that he gives the authority, and that the answers come from a special office in Washington and then, and then through the, uh, the state legislature and the Attorney General's office.
Thank you. Commissioner Mead. All right, next we've got the Intergovernmental Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Intergovernmental Committee met, uh, December 13th. Um, all were present except for Josh Anderson, the mayor, and Jay Yeager. We had a little bit of an issue that day with, um, traffic coming off the new bridge. Um, and because of that, the, um, clearance of citizens that had been requested by one of our, um, Anderson County people, uh, did not take place. The only action item was that, uh, a motion was made to approve the nomination of Mr. Leo York to the State of Tennessee Historical Commission for his work on preservation and identification at a lot of the, um, cemeteries here in Anderson County. Motion was made by Tracy Wondell, seconded by Bob Smallwood.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Isbell.
Yes.
Any, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was no further business. Meeting was adjourned.
Next, we've got, uh, Resolution Number 21-12-907, Establishing County Commission Meeting Dates and Times for 2022. Motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on passing the resolution establishing next year's meeting dates and times? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. Any new business? Commissioner Isbell.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, just a law update coming out of Planning Commission. We took up two, uh, in particular, um, tracks. One of them, that would be 194 residential units in District Two and 152 residential units in District Four, which will be coming forward this commission next month. So, that's good news. It's, uh, Manning for District Four, and the other one is the Horton Group that took that over from Joe Hobbs.
Commissioner Tracy.
Yeah, also, uh, where we're redoing the Planning Commission going forward, if it's a trailer park, you know how now it's in R1 and R2? If somebody requests that, it, it has to be a, you know, just a trailer park period. So they won't be trying to come in through, uh, R1, establish a trailer park. So, thank you.
No, thank you. Commissioner Tracy.
Yeah, I had the opportunity attending the, the last Planning Commission with Mr. Isbell, and I was very impressed with the new member that we appointed last month and, uh, and the progress that the Planning Commission is making. Tim can certainly give us a report on the short-term rental study that they're doing, and they're coming up with some good ideas and their meeting. I guess it's a workshop or...
It is.
Yeah.
We're doing that monthly. As a separate meeting from our regular Planning Commission, so if that wants to come and is invited, if anybody's got any input, I'm sure the chairman of that committee would allow that, and welcome it is what is welcome. I've said many times, that's a great committee.
Yeah. I was very impressed, and, uh, I think we're making good progress there. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Any, any old business? If not, we're getting out of here at 8 o'clock. Make a motion adjourned, Mr. Chairman.